Let me start with a demonstration. My name is Vasaghi, I work as a chemist and I joined the Toastmaster Club to become a confident and effective communicator. So shall we begin with Ms. Kalivani?
Okay, I'm Ms. Kalivani, I'm working at a manager at a Zorish insurance company. So I joined Toastmaster for learning how to speak English. It's another presentation how to in the English.
Great. Okay. Thank you Ms. Kalivani for introducing yourself. Let's give a big round of applause to Ms. Kalivani. Before we kickstart the meeting, let me walk you through some general reminders. First, please put your phone on silent mode, mute your microphone when not speaking, turn on your video, finally please be seated in a good posture to enjoy the video. Now, I would like to invite the President of Sutra Utama Toastmaster Club, Ms. Kaya Tan for our opening address. Ms. Kaya?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, of course.
Thank you to our SAA of the day, Toastmaster Vasaghi, for initiating our meeting today. Good evening fellow Toastmasters and distinguished guests. Welcome to Sutra Utama Toastmaster Club 110 regular meeting. Today, our team is the journey to success. I would like to start with the questions for everyone. How do you define success? Is it about the journey you experience? Or is the end result? Type one in the chat box if you feel the journey itself is success. Type two, if you believe the result what comes. And you can share any other thoughts in the chat box. I would like to see you all questions, the answer, let me see. Two, end result, so EJ is choosing end result. Okay, any others with members? You can just type in the chat box, let me see. So I would like to start with my little story about my own journey. Twelve years ago, I changed my career path from the travel industry to become a pharmaceutical sales representative. I still remember my first, very, very first day to following the colleagues into a pharmacy. I'm very nervous on that time. I hand over shaking my hand to my first business cards to my pharmacies. The pharmacies look at my card and first words talk to me and say, "You, you are the one, you are the one to handling this product, right? And now you take all my products out of my pharmacy." I was stunned over there and looking at him. I don't know what can I do. My colleagues lean on me and whispering and say, "That is not a good sign for the first day." The next day, I went into the office hoping to collect some customer list from my branch manager. My branch manager reply me, "Why you don't want to take from your manager or others colleague?" My colleague said the same thing again to me, "That is not a good sign for a second day." The third day and the days follow, I rejected by all my customers about, I think twenty over customers, or no one to see me. At that time, my mom suggested me, "Perhaps you have to quit this job. I don't think this job is suitable for you." But here I am, twelve years later, still with the same company. I went from being rejected to being accepted. From a zero experience to well becoming, can say like all breads in my company. And how I define a success? For me, success is about the end goal, the intentions, the efforts, the characters that goes into pursuing something meaningful. When you infuse those qualities, the outcome itself becomes almost inconsequences. Because in the reality, there's none of us are in control of the end result. There are others factors in the universe beyond our control. But when you give our best, we achieve success regardless in the outcome. In the end, real success isn't about being the best, but about being out the best in ourselves. If you're looking for the inspirations of becoming a successful person, and let me introduce you someone who knows this journey well. She went from a single beauty salon to owning six now. We even more on the horizon. Her stories to make your jaw would drop and her journey will make you want to stand out and settle her achievement. And so, please join me to welcome our six short beauty salon lady boss, immediate past presidents of Impian Amaz Mandarin Toastmaster Club and Presentations Mastery Tree, Adeline Chin. Welcome.
Wow, thank you our President Kaya Tan. Give me a so high cat now today. Alright, good evening again fellow Toastmaster. I think that our President Kaya Tan just now already shared us an insightful story about how she, how the journey to success, right? So let me show us, show you today. Let me describe how do the journey to success. The journey to success is about steady progress, pursues goal and overcoming challenge. Success doesn't happen overnight, it's built over time through effort, persistent and learning. This part often has setback, but each step bring growth and valuable lesson. Along the way, I realized that our member stay focused, stick clear goal and adjust to trends. Maybe the journey isn't unusual, straight line, it has up and down. But every small win except move you close to the goal. I know our member can do it, right? Alright, so because today we got some guests, right? So I will share about our Toastmaster journey and story. Toastmaster, can you help me share the slide? Alright, today our team is the journey to success. And what is our Toastmaster? Actually, our Toastmaster founder is Roxie Smalley. She leading a club meeting in nineteen twenty-five and founded in nineteen twenty-four. Toastmaster International is a nonprofit education organizing that empower people to become more effective speaker, communication and leader. And now we have two hundred seventeen, seventy thousand member over the year, over the world and one hundred fifty country. And we have fourteen hundred thousand club right now. And our path learning experience, we have six project. You can choose for your lovely path. And our five score competences is learn public speaking, interpersonal communication, charity leadership and management confident. And we have five level to achieve this goal. In order, in our meeting structure, we have, we consist of three main session. First is our prepared speech. Second is our table topic session. And last but not least is our evaluation. And our, and I will introduce our role player tonight. When I call upon your role, please introduce yourself and let us know what your purpose for the role. First is our SAA. Like just now, we see our lovely member. She is Toastmaster Visagi. Yeah, so she hold a Bachelor's degree in Florence's Science and Calorie works as a pharmaceutical chemist at Biocon. Her objective is to become an effective and confident communicator to enhance my professional integration and personal growth. So Vasaghi, can you please introduce your purpose for the SAA? Thank you. Over to you.
My name is Vasaghi and I am the Sergeant at Arms for this meeting.
Alright, thank you Vasaghi. Continue is our IT Toastmaster, yeah beautiful girl, Jojo Di. She is an insurance manager. Her inspiration is to inspire others to embrace a proactive mindset in both their personal and professional life. So how about Jojo, can you say hi to us?
Hello, everyone.
Alright, thank you our Toastmaster, Toastmaster Jojo Di. Continue is our timer. Timer is our leadership dynamic level one. She, he is your Chuni. He is an acting maintenance manager who provide solution on how to troubleshoot or identify machine problem. So say hi to everyone, Chuni.
Hi everyone, my name is Chuni. So today I will take the role player is the timer. He's, I will take all the role and the role player to time and then the speaker and eviator, the all the player. So thank you.
Thank you, Chuni. And continue is our accountant. She is Shonghui Peng, presentationally masterly level four. She is engineer who work closely with product designer and is trying to see better presentation skill. And say hi to everyone, Shonghui.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, as Eric say, I am good at counting money. So I, I, my role is an accountant today. So actual, actual role is to help you members to, I will listen to your overused words, including well, bad, so, and also crutches. This is my actual role. My side role is accounting money because I will find you for every, every crutches and every repeated words you use. At the end of the meeting, I report each speaker's status.
Yeah. Alright. Alright, thank you, Shonghui. I think today I were the best of our counter. Alright, continue is our GE, General Eviator is from our visiting Toastmaster from JB City Toastmaster. She is leadership dynamic level three, Lim Su Ting. I think we can give a round of applause to our visiting Toastmaster GE today. Alright, thank you. And last but not least is our grandma Ran, our new father. She just have a one baby sister in October. He is our mess law and has a, he has eleven years experience as a property negotiator. Now serving as a telephone area director. She is thick of success, ah, integrity and diligence. Throughout action to make it come true. Through integrity to gain respect and confidence. And she is our grandma Ran, mess law, please welcome.
Hi. Thank you Toastmaster of the evening, Adeline. Hi, dear Toastmaster and our lovely guest. Today I am your grandmother and my role is to encourage you to use the word of the day frequently by today and to address your improper language or grammar without meaning your names. As well to acknowledge the certain use of language and give credits to you all. And today's meeting, I think I shall introduce my word of the day. Ah, yes, thank you.
Yes, yes.
The word of the day, the word of this evening is infuse. Infuse, thank you Toastmaster Eric for putting the message in the chat box. Okay, the meaning number one is to fill and pervade. The sentence example is, her words is infused with a deep passion for success. The meaning number two is to instill a quality into something or someone. The example sentence is, he did his best to infuse the good, he did his best to infuse the good humor into his voice. And for this word of today, the synonym is to fill, to pervade, to permeate, to suffuse, to charge, to saturate. And the antonym is to deprive, remove, eliminate and to diverse. And now, and to share with you the idiom of this evening is move heaven and earth. So today, the idiom of today, the meaning is to work very hard on, on something. And this example is, he vowed that he would move heaven and earth to finish the project on schedule. So guys, ladies and gentlemen, please, you are encouraged to use the word and idiom of the day in today your speech. Thank you back to your Toastmaster of the evening, thank you.
Thank you, thank you our grandma Ran Mess Law. So continue, we are present our speaker today, prepared speech session. And our first speaker is eviator is Yong Ying Ying, presented, presenting mastery level five. And today, the speed died the, the pathway project is, the, sorry, sorry again, eh? The project objective is, the purpose of this project is for the member to introduce himself or herself to the club and learn the basic structure of a public speech. And who is he? He is what in the, in the property management industry. He say, the journey to success is try and error. Keep trying and practice until meet. And who is he? He is our Wong Wei Jing, dynamic leadership level four. His speed died is, hi, I am Wei Jing. And before I invite our first speaker, I shall invite the timer to demonstrate the timer sequence. Timer, are you ready? Four minute, the green, thank you. Four minute, the green light will be displayed. Five minute, the yellow light will be displayed. And six minute, the red light will be displayed. And six minute thirty seconds, please stop up your speech. And please welcome our first speaker, Wei Jing. Please give him a round of applause. Over to you Wei Jing.
Hi everyone, I am Wei Jing. Good evening for all of the Toastmaster and also guests. Before I start, may I know, is there any person you are first time see me and or first time listening my speech? You can put out your hand or read some word in the chat box. Ah, so to let you all know me well, so this is my project to introduce myself. Ah, some person is many times, ah, and some person maybe one or two times. Ah, okay, so for me, ah, my name is Wong Wei Jing and already seventy-seven years old. Ah, so as a person, ah, quite love Jiahuo because from my studying, I living in Jiahuo school day. Ah, until the, at the university, I also get at the Jiahuo area. Ah, so, and with two sibling, one is my sister and brother. And I'm in the younger in the family. So talking about my personality, about the DI SD personality, actually I'm the strongest person, which is the steadiness. Ah, the character for this personality, I could say the, it can use three word to, to let you know which patient, ah, patient, persistency and toughness. The good thing for steadiness person is his ability to support and help each other. And in the team, they are the good corporation. So I'm able to work with other, which cooperative with other and able to support my team member. Ah, but the worst thing is, we really scare for the conflict with each other. Ah, we totally no like to fighting. Ah, so if some person is fighting, I will be the role to try to let them cooling down. And also, ah, some of the time I will get up for myself from this situation because I totally don't like the conflict with each other. And actually for, for me, I am a person very passive. But, but most of the time in our mind, we had a lot of opinion wish to share, but we can't actively to share about something. Ah, we need some person to activate myself, to invite us of, of let us to encourage us to, to share something. Ah, so, but, but when we found something we love, ah, actually we can be able to stay with it for a long term. Ah, recently I found that, I've, I've got in the love with running. Ah, if, if taking back for myself to six month ago, I cannot believe I can run. Ah, as a person who really like the e-sport, especially the Dota. Ah, my daily routine for past six months actually is, wake up, going from home to work, after the work, rooting in front of my computer and playing the game. Ah, and but, but until now, I'm the person to be, invite some friend to, to go joining for running. Ah, so it's a big trend for me and especially need to thanks for Eric because he is a person at the initiative invite me to, to join a run. Ah, thank you Eric. And as, as Adeline in introduction for myself, actually I'm working in property management industry. But most of the time people will think I'm, uh, you will ask, is that you are property agent of you are managing some, uh, concept of Airbnb something? Ah, for my main role actually, I'm, I'm servicing for a community. And one of the key role is to maintain and manage for the common property, uh, for the building of area itself, uh, like you, like the service apartment condo, they've got the facility, right? Like swimming pool, gym, lift, ah, this is the common area. And my role is to keep all them functioning well. As, as another role, I also need to serve for the resident and quite demand for my communication skill. And officially, I had the mentor of my direct superior to introduce the Toastmaster for me. Ah, and let me to joining a Toastmaster. Before I joining, my purposely wish to improve my English skill and learn how to be a leader and also my communication skill. Ah, after the one year joining and I found that leadership actually can be learned in Toastmaster. And, and I wish at the one day I could be able uh, reach the stage at the annual conference. In the conclusion that, uh, I always, I always believe that the success is not a destination, is a journey and keep trying, trying and error. And as long as you are in the right path, ah, keep trying and practice for, for that and correct for the misstep. At the one day, I can be a better person and get what which one. Thank you for all to listening, I'm Wei Jing, thank you.
Wow, thank you, thank you Wei Jing. I think that you really can do it. Why? Because I really saw this improvement from first time until now. Can speak very smoothly and with infused with enthusiasm. Good try Wei Jing. And consideration to you. Continue, continue is our second speaker. Alright, second speaker, she, she eviator is Toastmaster CN one. And the project purpose today is, is for the member to present a speech on any topic, receive feedback and apply the feedback to a second speech. The purpose of this speech is for the member to present a speech and receive feedback from the eviator. And the timer sequence today is five to seven minutes. So I will invite the timer to demonstrate the timer sequence again because it's different from the first speaker timer sequence. Alright, timer, are you ready? The five minute, the, yes, the five minute, the green light will be displayed. Six minute, the yellow light will be displayed. And seven minute, the red light will be displayed. And seven minute fifteen second, the bell will be loud. And seven minutes thirty second, please stop up your speech. And today, our second speaker, she died. She title is infusing success into every step. Who is she? She is our Hima Rani Munisami. And she is an excellent teacher, a tough financial, Jeku Shora Digital. Active in action research at international level. Jury for education innovation project and previously served as a V P P L in our club. The objective of Toastmaster is to become a good speaker and she is Hima Rani. Please welcome. Over to you.
Uh thank you. Uh am am I audible to everyone? Okay, thank you. Good evening, fellow Toastmaster and guest. Today, I'm Hima Rani Munisami, stand here as a proud excellent teacher with various award-winning teacher too. But this success didn't happen overnight. Let me share my story with all of you. Then I first sat put in a classroom for special needs students. I was filled with mix of excitement and apprehension. My mind was brimming with ideas, but I quickly realized that unlike traditional teaching. Success in this setting looked very different. It wasn't about student hitting milestone at a standard pace. But rather about connecting with each child, seeing their unique abilities. And helping them to reach their potential step by step. I knew that I would need to infuse every lesson with. Interaction with a sense of hope, patience and creativity that. Where my journey to success truly began. In my journey as a special needs educator, I come to understand that success is major in unique ways. It might be a child who finally managed to communicate and starts engaging with others. Each achievement, no matter how small, is monumental. I learned to celebrate celebrate these quiet victories and I'm doing so by move heaven and earth. And I began to redefine what success really means by infused with encouragement and dedication every single day. Of course, the journey isn't always smooth. Teaching children with diverse needs comes with own set of challenges. Requiring us to adapt, adjust and innovate constantly. Early on, I faced many obstacles. Student had difficulty in focusing. Challenges in communication and need for more engaging materials. But every obstacle was also an invitation to infuse my teaching with creativity. I started developing interactive lesson to infuse my teaching with creativity. I started I started developing interactive lessons through platform like various A I applications. Using visual and activities tailored to each student's needs. I even integrated vocational skills training like teaching hair washing techniques to build their confidence and independence. With every innovation, I witness how small changes could have a profound impact. And that in itself became a source of innovation. Working in special needs education has taught me that every single step forward is worth celebrating. One student, for instance, had always struggled with self expression. After months of gentle encouragement, motivation and activities focused on building communication skills. He finally raised his hand and participate in state level competition and won for the second place. And yes, he won by competing with mainstream school. That day, his work was carried more words. It was infused with courage and it was reminder that my journey to success. It made up of these countless small steps that often go unnoticed. But are incredible meaningful. Over the years, I come to realize that success in my profession isn't a destination, but an ongoing journey. It's a journey that requires time, patience and unwavering belief in every child's potential. As a teacher, I was given the opportunity to infuse my kids lives with prospect positivity. Resilience and sense of purpose and each day I do my part to help them to take more step forward. My hope is that just as I infuse my students' lives with purpose. I have to find find ways to infuse my own parts with the same dedication, creativity and compassion. Because in the end, every step I take brings me closer to brighter tomorrow. For me and for those I guide along the way. Before I ending my speech, I would like to suggest the book title of The Power of Difference. The link between disorder and genius by Gail's source to embers of knowledge. Focusing on individual potential rather than limitations. That's all for me. Thank you and over to you.
Wow, thank you, thank you, Hima Rani. I think that success is without any shortcut, must go by step every step story, right? Some inspiring speech. Thank you, Hima, again. So continue is our third speaker. Who is he? Because uh this speaker, the speed title, the speed timer is same like second speaker, so I won't demonstrate the timer sequence again. Give me a minute. The third speaker, he evolved is our distinguished toastmaster B C Ng. And the purpose of this project is for the member to practice developing a. Plan and bring that plan to fusion. The purpose of this pro. Pitch is for the member to share some aspect of planning and improvement. His or her small step project. And who is he is our. Our. With uh president education. Beyond his work as a linguist. And he is passionate about exploring new thing, health and well-being. This person brings him amazing joys and fulfillment. And he is our V P E, Eric Lo. And his speed title is teaching English. Inspiring confident. Over to you, Eric.
Hey, hi. Thank you. Thank you, T M E for introducing me. Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Lo. Today, I want to share an exciting journey of uh teaching English. Through a project um that I developed for our English Without Borders, E W B Club. E W is a spin-off. For those who who do not know, it's a spin-off from our club. Uh with the purpose of helping our members to improve English through practices. My mission was simple, to infuse confidence into our members while helping them improve their English proficiency. Let me take you through this journey and the lessons learned along the way. The project begins with a story that happens in one of the session that we had. It's a simple but yet profound tale of uh love, change and perseverance. The story involved revolve around a boy and a girl who grew up together on a remote island. They transitioned from childhood to adulthood, their bones grew stronger and they fell in love naturally. Life, however, had its plans. The boy left the island and seeking better opportunities in the city. He promised to return, but as time passed. He became uncontrollable. So determined to find out what happened, the girl set out for the city. She was willing to move heaven and earth to reunite with her love. Her journey was not easy. Along the way, she encountered three people who tested her character and resolved. First, she met a greedy boatman who refused to help her cross the river unless she paid an exorbitant fee. Without any choices, she gave up her few valuables to continue her journey. Next, she encountered a stubborn monk who offered her no guidance insisting. That destiny would take its course and she must accept whatever happens. Finally, she met a literate butcher who made her feel unsafe, forcing her to rely on her wits to escape. So this was the story that. We have developed and use it in the E W B uh English lessons. These encounters in the story challenged the character's strength, but also taught her resilience and resourcefulness. So in our lessons, I in that I narrated these stories to the members. Painting vivid pictures of each characters and their struggles. The aim was to create an engaging, relatable narrative that would encourage discussions and deeper thinking. After telling the story, I asked the member to analyze and share their thoughts. The question I posed like, what do you think of the boat's man action? And what do you deal with someone like the monk or the butcher were deliberately open-ended to invite multiple perspectives. The responses were remarkable. Members were leaning forward at their seats eager to participate, some raised their hands immediately while others not along. Visibly processing the stories and the implications, even the quieter members who typically hesitated to speak were drawn to into the discussions. Then I especially noticed one or two members especially shy boldly shared her thoughts then. About the monk's stubbornness and how he reminded her of an experience in her own life. These personal connections brought her story to life and soon others follow suit. So what make this session so engaging was the atmosphere of mutual respect and curiosity. Members knew their opinions for value. And this confidence fueled their willingness to speak. Each opinion sparked another, creating a dynamic interactive discussions. One member suggested that the girl's resilience was a reflection of inner strength. Prompting another to debate whether her decisions to trust the butcher was wise or foolish. I also use gentle encouragement to ensure everyone has a chance to speak. When someone hesitated, I would smile and say, take your time. We are all eager to hear your thoughts. This resilience, this reassurance helped to ease the nerves. And soon, and even more reluctant members felt comfortable joining the conversation. So the lively discussions were not just about right or wrong answers, but about exploring the ideas. Expressing opinions and using English in the practical real world context. That's the key. The members wasn't just listening passively, they were actively thinking, questioning and articulating their views. It was clear that they felt a sense of ownership over the discussions, which made them more engaged and eager to contribute. At the end of the session, the room was bathed with excitement. Speak the members were not only speaking more, but also supporting each others with nods, smiles and admirations. Their shared experience created a sense of community where everyone felt empowered to voice their thoughts in English. No matter their levels of proficiency. That was the most important takeaway. And one of the key outcome of these sessions was the noticeable boost in the confidence among the members. Speaking in a group can be very inti- intimidating, especially in a second language. However, by creating a supportive environment and focusing on the story they could relate to. Members felt more comfortable expressing themselves. So as we analyze the characters motivations and actions. I aim to infuse every this discussions with encouragements and support. This helps the members to realize their insights were valuable and they could communicate effectively in English. These realizations were significant step towards improving their language skills. So implementing these small skills project taught me a few valuable lessons. Storytelling is powerful. A well-told story can capture attention, evoke emotions and inspire conversations. It serves as an excellent tool for language learning. Engagement drives learning. When learners are engaged, they are more likely to participate. Confidence is the key. Confidence in language often used as stems from practice in a safe and supportive environment. As I reflect on this journey, I reminded of the resilience of the human spirit likely like the girl in our story. So I hope everybody embrace the stories and in. And also inspire people around you to speak more English. Thank you very much. Back to you, Toastmaster of the evening.
Thank you, thank you, Eric. I think that uh thank you, Eric, present the speech which move and. I think your guys already have the answer in your heart, right? Very powerful speech. I think that start right now, I have I have to learn more English from Eric. Alright, thank you, Eric, again. So continue is our last speaker today. Um okay, alright. Our last speaker will present the project objective is. The purpose of this project is for the member to practice developing a plan, building a building. Building a team and fulfilling the plan with the help of his or her team. The purpose of the first speech is for the member to give a short overview of the plan for his or her project. And today, she evolved is our founder, president Raymond Chai, motivation strategy level four. And I will shall invite our timer to demonstrate the timer sequence again. Because this speaker, the timer sequence is two minutes, the green light will be short. And two minutes thirty second, the yellow light will be displayed. And three minutes, the red light will be displayed. And three minutes fifteen second, the bell will be rung and the three minutes thirty second. Please stop up your speech. And she titled is, speed title is wrong bit the second. And who is she? She is our chicken chain, a person, person translator. Language educator and corporate trainer. She is dedicated to the study of language and eager to explore. The secret of bilingual reserve in Malaysia and she is Jacqueline Cheng. Please welcome.
Am I audible? Everybody?
Yes, yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, my fellow Toastmasters and guests. Do you know what R P stands for? Anybody? R P stands for Royal Player Intensive Training. In July, when Eric approached me to organize R P two point zero, I was surprised. I didn't consider myself qualified for this role because my evaluation skills were lousy, were not up to the standards at all. I still remember my first evaluation was a disaster. I didn't even speak up for two minutes. I'm still feeling very sorry for the speaker being invited by me. However, I finally accepted this mission. Why? It's not because Eric said that I could copy and paste everything from R P one point zero. It's because I really truly want to join a good workshop to sharpen my evaluation skills. Starting off, I was so lucky to have the support from many members, from many. Role players from the first R P workshop and also get to assess to many useful documents. Which actually saved me a lot of time in the initial planning. However, R P two point zero actually is not a copycat. We made many changes. The first is that we lengthen the time from two hours to two and half hours. The second change is that we insert a Q and A session, which enhance. If uh we are planning to have this because we would like the participants.
which enhance, if, uh, we are planning to have this because we would like the participants to engage with our trainers right away on the spot. Most importantly, we have our trainers, this time we have two trainers instead of one. Alongside our evergreen. Here, he is also a distinguished Toastmaster from J B C D Toastmasters Cup. To me, the greatest challenge actually is to get the members to join. Our team, our dedicated committee members are making a moving heaven and earth to make sure the workshop is going to be a success. However, at the moment, we have no choice. We have to postpone the workshop to a later date due to unforeseen uh, situation, but it doesn't matter. Uh, we are still welcome here because this workshop is still is not canceled. It is just postponed. So your participation is still welcome. The link is still open. You won't regret it, I'm sure. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, our G, our last speaker, Jacqueline Chang. Jacqueline, I think that you try to believe yourself, nothing impossible, just do it. Every time our V P call upon our fellow Toastmaster, when you do it, the answer will return back you soon. Alright? Alright, thank you, our Jacqueline again. So right now is continue is our is my lovely session and exciting session. I don't, I believe our fellow Toastmaster also same right. So continue is our paper topic session. I shall invite our host master Hong and Ju, engaging humor level four. Let me introduce, uh, Andrew first. She said, knowing life is like a box of chocolate and you will never know what you will get it. What you will get still, you have it. A person who inspired by the Chinese meta faces to be a better man in all of his life aspect and other. And who is he? He is our third paper topic master, Hong and Ju. Please welcome over to you, Andrew.
Yeah, thank you. Am I audible?
Yes.
Uh, uh, thank you, um, thank you, the rain to introduce myself, um. Okay, I saw the slides on. Yeah, I'm, my name is E J, um, I'm, uh, your favorite topic master of the day. And, and this section just want to be future is important speech me to say that, uh, you will be called, I will be call your name. And you will be not even know what will be the question be posed out. And after that, when you see the questions, just need to.
Sorry, Andrew. Hi, Andrew. Is it my line lacking or Andrew lacking? Everybody am I audible?
Yes.
Alright, uh, never mind because I, uh, but disturb you again for a while, uh, for Andrew because I just now forget to invite our timer to have a timer report. So I invite our timer have a timer report just now for the present speech.
Okay, so now I share the timer and the timer.
Yes, thank you, please.
So the first, first speaker, Beijing, I spoke for six minute forty second. So the second speaker, him already spoke for five minute twenty two sec, twenty three second. Third speaker, Eric, spoke for seven minute twenty six second. Fourth speaker, Jack Green Chang spoke for three minute X second. So only the first speaker is not eligible. Back to you, T B.
Alright, thank you. So Andrew, are you ready?
Uh, yes, I'm back. I'm back. So I just kidnapped by you for just now. Sorry for that.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Uh, thanks for you to having me to warm up the station. Alright, uh, let's go back to where I'm coming, where I'm stopped is the timing sequence, right? So let's demonstrate the timing sequence of time of this. So everyone have been giving a time, uh, in one minute, the green light will be shown. And then one minute and thirty seconds, the yellow light will be shown. And then for the two minutes, the red light will be shown. And the two minute and fifty seconds, the bell will be ring and you're gonna wrap up your speech in another fifty seconds. So I hope all the people have been called up the name to be participate well and move, uh, of and haven't enough to finish your speech. Okay, more than one minutes and then to make it before twelve, two minutes and thirty minutes. Alright, um, okay, so I will let the kickstart this section without further delay. And the first speaker I will call out for today, they're gonna be Josie.
Why you always choose me be the first?
Yes.
Uh, Black C.
Black C.
I thought I can answer.
Okay, the question given is the most achievable success is follow the success story. The most achievable success is to follow the succeed story.
Okay, can I say no for these quotes? Um, hi, everyone. Am I audible? Hi, regarding the quotes just now, um, some people say, yes, you have to follow what people have success in the past, then you just copy their journey. But for me, um, I'm a bit different. When people say you must follow the roads that has been, uh, experiments a lot in the past, then you will get the succeed. But for me, I will not. Why I said that? In past few years, I started a craft business. Everyone told me there is no one doing in the bit, in the market, you will not succeed because no one do it. Everyone who do it is fail. But for me, I don't care. I just want to try. So I went to a lot of school, I get support, then I create a different journey. I create a difference, a success journey and I get a very good results. So I'm sorry, I don't agree for this. I, I some, I agree, but I wouldn't follow. Thank you. Back to you, table topic master, E J.
Hey, thank you, Joseph, to share your thought. Yes, um, there will be some great remark from you that saying that something cannot be repeated the same because of, uh, your sharing us that it might be somehow you need to try something new and then the success not be guaranteed. But the message is no matter how you still need to believe what you're doing and then try something new to achieve your goal. Thanks for your sharing, Josie. And the next speaker I want to call up are gonna be Watsu. Is Watsu there? Yes, Watsu.
Oh, this is the most frightening part actually. So I think I will choose the first F, the white S.
White S, the white S please.
Hmm.
A journey starts from a belief. A journey starts from a bliss. This is yours.
Okay, I start now?
Yeah.
Okay, a, a journey starts from a belief. Okay, last year I come to J B to join my company known as Biocon San Grand Bahad. Initially, I was placed in a team called Finnish Product Team. In this team, I realized that I didn't learn anything, even though the pay was quite high. What I was doing was just sitting and doing some trivial works which didn't really expand my knowledge. So others say that I just, I should just take this job just because the pay is very high. But deep inside, I believe that I need to expand my knowledge and take new challenges. So at the end, I decided to change my team to a new team known as the in process team. In this new team, I actually, I was required to work under rotating shift with extended time to learn new knowledge, to learn new analytic technique and so on. Even though my previous team, I was just enjoying a lot. In my new team, I really learned a lot of things. Many people say that I shouldn't be going to a new team because this team is actually a quite a challenging team and many people say that I wouldn't be successful. But deep inside, I believe in myself that I can do it. I can take this new challenge. At the end of the day, I learned a lot of new things and expand my analyticals skills and become a good analyst to an extent. I get a great praise by my manager. I succeed in my life because I believe in myself. I believe that I can do it. That's all from me. Thank you.
Thank you, Watsu. Yeah, thanks for sharing your own story that whereby your journey starting for belief and you make it happens and keep you motivated to face unknown challenges to make yourself to become a better man. So this is very great. I great sharing and, uh, appreciate your success in your new journey of career. And after the two demonstration of our experienced Toastmaster, I believe my guest is can't wait to be perform themselves. So hereby I will be have, uh, pressure to call out what our guest, Kalai. Kalai, are you there? Kalai, are you still with us?
I think she's inside the bus. That's how she says she's waiting for the bus to back to hometown, right?
Oh, I see. Wow, quite a way energetic guest for us. How, how about we have another guest, Jama? Jama, are you there, Jama? Okay, but it's okay. And then, but then, uh, let's go back to our members then. So the, the, this question, this people I will gonna call up, I think we have a new joining. So Jessica, are you there?
Uh, sorry, can you guys hear me?
And may I know who is speaking?
Yeah, I would like to. Yeah, thank you. I would like to go with, uh, letter E.
E, okay.
Yes.
Oh. I'm sorry about the wording, but the, the word will be the success can be read and talk. Success can be read and talk.
Yes. If the call because, uh, sus- success can be read and talk, that's mean you learn from the person already assist. I think with that way, we can, um, achieve our goal faster. Like you reading from person who already have, uh, some succeed in their life, they're sharing, they're writing the book. Or you nowadays, many people very motivate sharing in, uh, social media. You can learn from that also. So I believe that, um, if you read and inspired by the story of the person already assist, you can be assist to and faster. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your sharing, Jessica. Yes. Yes, you're sharing me a good idea that yes, success can be learned from the others. I heard people always say that learn the best from the others. You don't need to do so many failure. Then you can be more successful earlier. Thanks for your sharing. And the next one, I will call out the next member. How about we have Jojo here? Where's Jojo?
I'm the master today and I can skip the questions, but unfortunately.
There we go for Truny. Truny, do you see the question before? I don't think it's.
Okay, Truny, are you ready?
Oh, Truny is hiding. Okay. Can we have, we, who else? Truny is back. Oh, right, Truny, come. Show me your alphabet. And, and I need one people to take the, the timer.
I can.
Okay.
Let me do that.
Thanks, Jojo. Okay. So I choose you. You, okay, you please. Fit is a key factor of success. Fit is a key factor of success. And what it means to fit. The fit is kind of the belief. You need to believe that what your belief is means, uh, faith. Hmm, okay, so I think the, this why I agree for the, um, the face, the key for the factor of success. Um, because sometime maybe I, um, I'll be, you know, know the, know the patient or know, um, maybe tired. So if we believe something, maybe you can get, um, to success and we can find the, the good direction of, um, from the good to great. So I think this one is for us. Um, it, this one can make me to, um, give me a lot of the energy and more patient to do what I, uh, what I want to do. So I think this one is, um, hmm, can this is for, for me, I think this one is, um, the, the good and the good attitude for let me to, to see the future up. So so this is my answer. Okay, back to you, the, the table topic master. Yeah, thank you, Truny, for sharing us how you motivate yourself by using the fit when come to the downturn on your career and your life as well. So I think everyone can learn very good, uh, message from him that as long as you have the fit, so everything you can overcome it. So good to sharing to you. Alright, let's move on. We still have three alphabet to go on. And may I invite our gamer Ian Max? Will you wanna take a try?
Hey, Jay, and I'm typing. Okay, okay, let me do it. Which one still last?
I have, uh, white C and two S.
Oh, okay. And the two S, okay, either one S, the first S.
The black one, the black S.
Uh, black S.
Why success means to you? Why success means to you?
I think you table copy master, why success means to you, fellow Toastmaster, firstly, I will share. Firstly, I will share that, hmm, what is my job? My job is a, is a salesman. After my graduation, even when I was in the tertiary school, I already started my, my career as a salesman. So after my graduation, I just, I, I was a, the insurance agent and I was a multi, uh, multi-level marketer. And I went to a corporate, co- uh, uh, M N C company as a corporate sales. And now I have been in my property industry about eleven, this is eleven years as a sales also. So what does and why does success mean to me? It means a goal. It was mean a goal to me, but now success me to me is a journey like what? Just now the true, uh, I think the Truny, Truny say success is not a, a destination, is a, is a journey to reach your destination. So I say it's not the, the final spot, final line that we are reaching is a, is it currently, are we brave enough, are we bold enough to step out to do whatever is right? Actually, we all know what we are, what we need to do to, to achieve something out. to step out, to do whatever is right? Actually, we all know what we are, what we need to do, to to achieve something, ah what we need to do, we know. But are we really do it? Are we really step out to do it? So in the day, the moment when you step out, your voice out, you step out, you raise out your head. That is the thing, that is the moment you you get the success. So when you get the success, you gain your confidence. This is where your confidence come from. And this is how we gain our confidence come from the public speech and whatever so on. So in Toastmaster, just raise out your hand. Just voice out and speak out, you will gain your your confidence and become a great speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Max. I have a right pick for today. Thanks for your sharing us some kind of formula that able to bring the success to us and be the confidence that we have success bring confidence. So thanks for us to sharing me this uh great quote on that. And the next uh speaker, I would like to invite Catherine, Catherine Wong. Catherine, I saw you. Yes. We have one clear C and Y S.
How we say my name? Initial Catherine, K C.
Hey. An extraordinary team equal to a breakthrough success. Uh an extraordinary team equal to breakthrough success.
Can you elaborate more extraordinary means?
Extraordinary mean is exceptional, is a very powerful team.
Ah, okay.
It's not ordinary, it's an extra oddi-
Okay, um very special, like Eric say. Um. I would say agree, yeah, because uh since I'm start with my career, I always alone. But after I comes to a company with a group of members or colleague, then I realized the power to be like a you love, people can help each other, cooperate each other, and then to to help each other where, uh because I believe every person have their own strength and weakness. So we can help his or her weakness using our strengthness. In order to cover, uh we say cover, or maybe we can tell that if we have two uh very powerful members, which is very uh useful, I mean not useful, are very um um very strong in some uh term like in our team might be like design, uh she's very talented in design. Who person is very talented in design, then they can use their own talents to group even more powerful and become a more special and uh people are smiling come up. So I believe team is more strong than be alone. Um thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Checkering, to share us the experience of being the team. Yes, this is very indeed, if we have a deal with the diversity and conclusions by the many mixed different other people, like what we see for Avengers from the Malvish movie. So together, they were great, even they will be do something more impossible and make it possible. Thanks for your sharing of your experience. And I know that I will have time to finish off my table today and the last questions. And with that, I would like to wrap up my sections by calling up our Miss Madam President to wrap up this section for us. Claire, are you there? Yeah, you only have one choice. It's a Y C, Y S.
Okay, Ken.
No pain, no gain. The journey is a journey of success. No pain, no gain is a journey of success.
Good evening, fellow Toastmasters. No pain, no gain, the journey of success. When I first day to work in my pharmaceutical industry, I know there's a pain and a gain. First day, my English was bad. And my product manager English is super good. He teach me, he taught me. He taught me the single first word. My product's name called Assista Sistine. When I pronounce this name, I couldn't pronounce at all. I keep uh 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 uh. He was very angry. He straight away throw the pen on the whiteboard and asked me where you study from. Are you study bio? I said, no. Economy? Yes. I hate economy students because English was bad. I don't know how. And she asked me, he asked me, by tomorrow, I want you to tell me these words. And one whole night, I didn't sleep. I keep uh 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 assist, assist, assist until the next day. The next day, first thing he told he asked me, what is the words, how to pronounce again? Then I say, Assista Sistine, Mister Dan. He said, well done. So, fellow Toastmasters, no pain, no gain. You have to try and keep trying and trying. Then the success will come to you. Thank you, and back to you, Toastmaster of the Toast T D T D M.
Thank you, Claire, and Tisha, the new one, successor nineteen, is it? Well, I need to practice more about that. And you sharing, you're sharing us your painful story, but in the end, you gain the right pronunciation on the medicals names and make your success in the career as well. So thanks for that, Claire. So and then I will be end my table topic sections. Hope you all enjoy it. And we'll see you again. And I will hand over to the timer to read up the timer report for all the speakers. Thank you. Hand over to you, David, uh T M E, Adeline.
Uh is it you need to invite timer to read out the report of timer?
Ah, yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
I do.
Yes, so now I will show the timer report. The first speaker, Josie spoke for one minute twenty-two second. Second speaker, um Wasaki spoke for one minute fifty-two second. Third speaker, Jessica, spoke for forty-two second. Fourth speaker, me, spoke for one minute twenty-one second. Uh fifth speaker, Maxwell, spoke for one minute fifty-two second. Sixth speaker, uh Catherine, spoke for one minute thirty-second. Seventh speaker, Keertan spoke for one minute forty-second. So only those, the speaker is not eligible. Back to you. Table to be understood.
Thank you, Chunyi. Now I officially hand over to T M E of T M E, Adeline Chin.
Thank you, thank you, Andrew. Wow, your table topic session really no pain, no gain, huh? I like your table topic, uh table topic, because your table topic really like our member friends and all question related to our team, our like our speaker EG to present, well done, Andrew. All right. Thank you, Andrew, again. So continue is our voting session. So, Joe Master, can you share the Q and A code for the voting session? Yeah, for the first, we were voting, spend the Q and A code and voting for the best speaker. And how about our timer try to complete thirty-second for this session? To let our member for the voting. And fellow member, please voting for the best speaker and best table topic two speaker. All right, timer, enough, hi.
I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. Fellow member, are you ready for the voting session? Finish right. All right, so continue, Joe Master, please. Get ready, now is our session. Everyone, please open, share on your video and your bright and smile. Are you ready?
Uh wait, let me say one, two, three, and then I will take a photo.
All right.
Can I pick now, or you want me to ask Miss Kalivani and the rest of the people to open their camera?
Sure. Yes, of course. How about our Kalai, our guest Kalai, Jama, and Toastmaster Siema? Kalivani not available because he's she's inside the bus. Oh, you can open, good.
Yeah, she can open, really. I think everyone is here ready, so I will I'll just say one, two, three, yeah. So, one, two, three, smile.
Wait for Jama, sorry. Jama is is coming. Ah, yes, hi, Jama.
Hi.
Hi, Jama. And Madam.
Let me say, then, one, two, three, smile. Uh I'll take another one, smile please. One, two, three. Okay, done.
All right, thank you, uh Wasaki. All right, now is our, now is my rest time. Wow, finally, I can rest. All right, so time, uh we we can rest how many minutes?
Now is take forty-five, uh uh fifty-four. So later is nine. So we rest one minute.
All right, fellow member, we can go to right now. And it's my rest time. See you later. Oh. Bye, five minutes, see you.
Adeline immediately disappear. Hello, everyone. Hello, hello. Hi, Jama.
Please, Jama.
Hi.
Hello.
Hello, can you hear my voice?
Yes, hi, Jana.
Hi.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too.
How you get to know our club?
Actually, I know our club through searching in uh Google. I Google it.
Oh, what 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 makes you to search Toastmasters?
Actually, um uh I Google it for the Toastmaster because I want to improve my communication skills and to increase my confidence level uh for uh in for the public speaking.
Oh, I see. So how how do you feel after the first session, the first? Just.
A little bit severing.
Uh, sorry?
A little bit severing.
Why?
Severing.
What's your brain? What happens?
Yeah.
I like the environments or the learning, learning environments. Do you like it?
Yeah, I like it because everybody I uh if if uh I can see that, i- if I can see here, everybody uh have to support is each other.
Yeah, thank you, thank you so much, thank you so much. So your content, Josie, is it uh before that?
Uh yes.
Yeah, okay, okay, okay. Thank you, Jama. Later, we talk to you more. Hi, Jessica. Sorry, can I pronounce your name, Claire? My name is Claire, yes. Thank you, because I'm very bad at pronunciation, especially personal name. Uh it's okay, it's okay. We we are from don't know how to pronounce there until we know how to pronounce. Normally. Because actually, the uh normal vocabulary, you can use dictionary, but the specific na- name, you, I I cannot find in in any dictionary except I look in YouTube and there is the person teach how to pronounce. I wonder how can you guys recognize and can pronounce the personal name? Um you can, we can learn from the um what they call phonics. You know what is phonics? Oh, this, I'm not sure. Is it is a forum to study English? Uh it's not the forums to study, but it's the phonics that you can learn from like R E A or U pronunciations. Uh you can learn from the phonics, but you can find some teachers to teach phonics. I uh is it the the one you just mentioned is the short video lasts around one to two minutes in Google that the person teach how to pronounce the name, is it? Um yeah, there's some 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 people, they are teaching in YouTube, then some people, they are but if you want to really want to uh 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 learn the phonics, I think you better find a teacher. It will be better. Yes, I think that is the the good suggestion because I have intention to look for the way how to pronounce the personal name. But that is my active way. How how about the passive way? Like, you listen somewhere without Google and sure for it, you can learn. See more movie, because movie will call the name.
Um I see, I see. Thank you for your for your suggestion.
So our club members like Eric and Jacqueline, they are translator, their English are very good, then you can you talk more with them also.
Actually, I, yeah, I bring this question to Eric's uh online session. He he said, yeah, he said he will guide me how to know about it.
Yeah, yeah, Eric is a right persons that you are looking for.
Thank you.
You also can look for Wasagi also. Wasagi English also very good.
I must say.
Yeah, her pronunciation is also very good. You can look for her also.
I can see.
Yeah, our Adeline is back. Su Ting, how are you, Su Ting?
Hi, hi. It's just wondering, so later after the counter, I need to invite the timer to provide the timing for the meeting, is it?
Uh, yes.
Ah, okay. All right, bye.
Thank you for coming, Su Ting.
No worries, no worries.
Uh, Miss President, I think the time is already nine P M, so can we start?
Yes, that now.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. Hope you feel refreshed after our break. So now, may I invite the Toastmaster of the day, Miss Adeline, to continue the meeting?
Sure, thank you, Wasaki. So right now is continue our second part and last part for the meeting today. And I shall invite our general evaluator tonight. She from J B City Toastmaster and his pathway is leadership dynamic. And shall I invite our G again? Su Ting, pass over to you. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Toastmaster. Evening, Adeline, for the warm welcome. Madam President, fellow Toastmasters and welcome guests. As the general evaluator today, I conduct the evaluation portion for the meeting. I'll be calling on a team of consists of the speech evaluator, counter, grammarian and timer to assist me with giving feedbacks to our speaker and I will evaluate everything that takes place during the club meeting. This evaluation session will consist of three parts. First, evaluation on the prepared speeches, followed by the evaluation from grammarian, our counter report, timer report, and lastly, I shall report on the entire meeting proceedings. This segment provides the speaker who has spoken tonight with instantaneous feedback from their fellow Toastmasters members so that they could overcome their flaws while reinforce good habits in their presentations. The time allocated for speech evaluation is two to three minutes. May I have invite the timer to help to demonstrate the sequence? At two minutes, the green background will be shown. At two minutes and thirty seconds, the yellow background be shown. At three minutes, the red background be shown. And the bell will be shown at the three minutes fifteen seconds, and the speaker has another fifteen seconds to work up the evaluation. Our first speech evaluator. Our first speech evaluator is Liang Ying Yi, Presentation Master Five, who will be writing the Level One Project One Speech from Wang Weijin, Dynamic Leadership Four. Let's put our hands together to welcome Ying Yi.
Before I start, you say one can hear my voice clearly?
Not so clear. Can you talk louder? I couldn't hear you clear. Yeah, thanks.
How about now?
Uh yeah, now much better. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ying Yi. Hello, everyone. My name is Ying Yi. So it's my time to evaluate Wajin Icebreaker today. So first of all, actually, I like his speech type of with the high and reading. The shot and direct tell audience what he wants to share with us, my right? So his speech type of a very good structure uh with the opening, content and conclusion. So do you notice that he needs timeline method in his content? It's from his childhood until today. So he also talked about his family members, personality, or big life change. The hand gesture. So we know that uh throughout the Zoom meeting, it is hard to perform uh with the body language, but we didn't worry about it as I can see. His hand gesture is clearly in force picture a whole speech. So I have some humble suggestion for Wajin because he told me that uh he want to have some uh more details or improvement for his speech for this second halfway. So my humble suggestion for first is the this is your second halfway and I will have high expectation for your speech. First is, I would like to suggest your if you can improve uh for the eye contact because I noticed that you will keep looking down. Looking down when you deliver a speech, so I probably you are looking at your short notes or your short script if not mistake. And this will affect your eye contact when you deliver your speech because if you look keep looking down, which means I am not uh looking at the camera or look at the background. So because today is actually the icebreaker as you are actually, you are talking while talking about your own story, right? So you have probably known your own story well, so I think that you definitely can deliver or you tell us your own story own story with confidence. So you can look the camera directly and while deliver your speech and can just show where your speech. Next is uh in conclusion, actually like your six minute speech as we know you well, which also fulfill the project purpose for this icebreaker. And you are excellent in first is public speaking structure, second is your hand gesture when you deliver your speech. That is, you are telling us your own story. You might improve more on first is practice. If one is your first uh is your own story, you can just show where your screen and just look at your cam- look at camera. Show your confidence level. So that's all from my personal suggestion and uh evaluation for Wajin. I look forward from the next excellent speech. Over to you, General Writer.
Thank you, Ying Yi, for the constructive feedback. Let's give her our applause, Ying Yi. And now move on to the second speech evaluator is Toastmaster CN One, who will be evaluating the Level One Project Two Speech from Toastmaster Hemarani. Let's put our hands together to welcome CN One.
Am I audible now?
Yes, a bit audible, but you have a echo, so.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Toastmaster, friends and visitor. I'm CM One. Today I will be as uh speaker for Hameini. As an educator, your impact knowledge and influence to your student love and interest in learning in a non-native language is really impressed me. I notice your charers extend beyond the student to include their include their parents and also society as a whole. The technique you use to connect student to their interests in foreign language will help them move heaven and earth for their future, which can truly transform their future too. Additionally, you have great body language and use ten gestures effectively. Which stranger that audience attention your speech of presentation is gender, which is very clear. My gen- my my gender suggestion is I hope you can share more information about how to influence young students to learn more than one uh foreign language and it is very helpful for others. Thank you very much. This is my sug- uh my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, CN One, for the feedback. And now we move on to our third speech evaluator, which is Bisingo, Distinguished Toastmaster, who will be writing the Level Three Project One Speech from Leadership Development and yeah, Leadership Development to Eric Lo. Let's put our hands together to welcome Bisingo.
Thank you, General Evaluators. Su Dang. Eric, congratulations on successfully planning and implementing your project either. Teaching English inspires confidence. I'm truly impressed by this either because it resonates with my own experience in learning English. Organizing and carrying out an event is no easy task. It significantly gives our confidence and we achieve our goals. Today, I want to express my appreciation for your dedications and initiative in creating an opportunity for your members to learn English. Having a clear intentions helps you learn how to structure your plans. Through careful planning, you can reflect on your experiences and collaborate effectively with your team. As a result, you successfully executed your task. For that, you form a team at the right time to develop the project plan which allow for effective sharing and well organized approach to moving forward. Additionally, you share your experiences and expectations for running the event such as creating an environment that encourage discussions and participations. This contributed to its success. Ultimately, both you and your members benefited from this learning experience. What I appreciate most is that you provide details about your planning process by addressing the five W. Who, Toastmaster member, what? E W B, when, once a month, where, Toastmaster Club, and why to improve their English? I believe we would also like to hear more about your challenges such as how to motivate them to continue English learning effectively and how to manage their time, roles and participation. And the most important is how to get some role players to support it because I re- I I remember these events has been disconnected, discontinued. Additionally, maybe I would suggest that consider using PowerPoint to present evidence of your work and enhance your presentations. You might create a video to engage your audience because this is the ideal place for you to explore your English teaching to the members learning who of their uh learning journey. Overall, your good intentions and dedications have positively impacted others and inspired more members to participate and embrace leadership's roles. I look forward to seeing your next event plan, which will encourage members to challenge themselves without fear. But uh well done. Over to you, G. Su Dang.
Thank you, Madam One, for the feedback. And let's give our applause for the feedback. And next, I shall move on to our first speech evaluator, which is MS Four Raymond Chai, who will be writing the Level Four Speech from Toastmaster Jacqueline. Let's put our hands together to welcome Raymond Chai.
Am I audible?
Yes, you are.
Can you hear me? Okay. Jacqueline, okay, first of all, congratulations as you completed this project. Now throughout your speech, I noticed that you're actually telling us all about your past experience about the RP for second. So what thing you did very well is you did explain to us to me what is RP for second because actually before that I go to Google and search, I really find no clue about what all this about RP for second, alright? So I would say you have a good structure and good story uh telling us all about the past experience. And another thing is, I also like your voice, which is you speak very moderate, not very fast, not very slow, okay? So this easily connecting with the audience, very good. And then I believe you are the good storyteller because I really like the way how you describe uh RP for second, the past experience, know how your work together, how you deal with the challenge and how you're uh overcome the obstacle. Alright, so I think you potentially can be a very good storyteller in the future. Now, in terms of area of improvement, I have two suggestion. Uh number one is actually, your objective of this project is you need to tell us your developing plan, building team. Uh rather than you tell us all about your past experience about the RP for second, so myself, I would rather to hear something more about your plan. How you going to develop a team building? Now, for example, something like the objective or your plan, the importance of your plan. How to make your team member have more better connection with each other? How they build trust with each other and also the outdoor activities? How can bring them more closer to each other? How to share the common achievement? Alright, and then my second suggestion is try to avoid those negative word like sorry, I apologize, I'm disqualified to do this thing because all these negative words will mitigate your confidence and lower down your energy. Alright, so all in all, I do enjoy very much about your speech and I look forward to your next exciting speech. Back to you, General Evaluator, Su Dang.
Thank you to our Raymond Chai for the feedback. And now we move on to the last speech evaluator, which is Presentation Master One, Tor Shengfu, who will be evaluating the Level Three Project from E H Four, Wang Inzhu. Let's put our hands together to welcome Shengfu.
Hi, am I audible?
Yes, you are audible.
Yes. So actually, I uh very good evening, everyone. So today, actually, I I am glad that actually I have the this opportunity opportunity to evaluate E J's role as a table topic master with a particular uh in focus on the active listening. As a table topic master, it's not just uh to present the topic, interesting topic uh to the audience, but also uh the speaker, the top table topic master is also need to we engage with the speaker throughout the session. So let us look closer what how the E J has performed uh in this session. So first, I would like to give E J a round applause because uh E J has demonstrated a very good active listening throughout through his body language in this session because when when the speaker they bring their their table topic. Uh I noticed DJ did not is hit uh throughout uh when when the speakers uh share something interesting topic or when he agree with the the things that shared by the speaker. So it shows that E E J is not just waiting for the for for his turn to speak, but he also fully concentrated on the content what has been delivered by the speaker. Secondly, after each speaker are finished their 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 speech, E J did uh give a very uh positive feedback of or what they have shared and share about his uh his uh opinion or his uh in his talk about about what had been shared by the speaker. Then uh which also show that uh E J were actively listening uh in uh in this uh in his role as a topic table topic master. And also at the time when when the speaker show seem unsure about what's the meaning of the topic, E J also come come into it to to assist to tell the speaker uh about what's the meaning of the topic so that the speaker can can I can understand better and divert in better way of their topic that they 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 have chosen. So however, there are some some uh area of improvement, I write, I I would like, maybe you can work on, uh you you can you can further improve such as when maybe you can increase the variety of the of of the topic because I noticed most of their topic are in is related to the motivation topic. So maybe you can, you can uh include some interesting uh topic or some some topic come with some humorous uh uh con- uh con- content uh so it will make your your table top decisions more interesting. So overall, I think E J did a very good job uh as a topic master disrupt and and you keep all the the entire session and and engaging and you manage the time very well and and with you just need some small adjustment uh in from it's adjustment in this session, I view you can you can perform even better in your future role as a topic masters. Yeah, that's all from my and back to you, Ted. The the general evaluation. It's not evaluated.
Thank you. Thank you to our fifth er- evaluator. And let's give a round of applause to all five. Yeah, I have the timers report, please.
Yes, so now I show the timer report. Um the first evaluator Liang Ying spoke for three minutes, X second. So the second evaluator, CN One spoke for one minute thirty-two second. The test, the evaluator, Bisingo spoke for three minutes, fifty second. For the evaluator, Raymond Chai spoke for two minutes, forty second. So the fifth evaluator Toshimpu spoke for three minutes, forty second. So the second evaluator and the fifth um evaluator is uh not eligible. Back to you, General Elevator.
Thank you, Mister Timer, for the report. Please vote for the Aligibo erator. And I shall invite the language evaluator, the grammarian, for his evaluation tonight. The language evaluator helps us to make sure that we use correct English and pronunciation. And let's welcome Max Law, Strategy Leadership Five.
Hi, thank you. Thank you. I think you made a. I think you made a. Uh, my voice is okay, not not.
There's a call from my side now.
Alright, now this is a thank you, Mr. Timer. Now this is my suggestion. And I have a moment for today, this evening. Of this evening. Let me share my grammar report. A few seconds, please.
Let me share my grammar report. A few seconds, please. Okay, here is my. And it is a gentleman of toastmasters. Here is my grammar report for today. Obviously, I would like to talk about the mispronunciation for today. The first one is the. Describe, I heard someone that they pronounce as describe. Uh, it should be uh, described. The second one is grammar, grammarian. I heard someone say grandma, grandmaian, grandmaian. So it should be, it should be grammarian. The next one is dynamic. I heard someone say din- dynamic. It should be di- dynamic. No, it's not dynamic, it's not dynamic. It should be dynamic, dynamic, dynamic. The next one, I heard someone say. Classy, classy, it should be pacy, pacy, active, pacy. And the next one, uh, I heard someone say, uh, robot, robot, it should be robot. R A P, red box. And the next one. Uh, circumstance, it's not, it's not circumstance. It should be circumstance, circumstance. And the last one. Extraordinary, extraordinary. I heard someone say, uh, extraordinary. Uh, it should be a concept, extra, extraordinary, extraordinary. Moving down is the improper use of my. Suggestion, then my personal suggestion to you is you are the one to handling the job. It should be you, uh, you are the one to handle, to handle the job. Uh, after two should be original work to handle. The next one, the time location is five to seven minutes. Uh, because this seven minutes, I, is the crueler, crueler form can use seven minutes. And the next one, what is our toastmaster? It could be refrained to, uh, what is toastmasters? Or what is about toastmaster organization? The next one, table topic session. As we need to understand table topic. Topics should, should, should add the S is the plural form topics. And this is a copyright in Toastmaster S V, yeah, registered the copyright. So should be pronounced as table topics. Session, paper topics, paper topics, master, paper topics session. Next one, quite love Joe Ho. Uh, I think this one can be refreshed you. I love, I love or I like Joe Ho very much. The next one, younger in family, perhaps the speaker wanted to say young girls, the smallest young girls in family. The next one, steadiness, steadiness person. Steadiness is now, can, you want to uh, uh, describe yourself. It should be used as a adjective, steady person. The bell will be ring. And the proper grammar should be the bell will be rung. I am a bit different. A bit, I could subject to refresh to use the advert. I am slightly different too, yeah, slightly different, use the uh, advert. And the next one, success journey. Uh, success, actually, it's a successful journey. I am very motivated. Perhaps you want the speaker wants you. Uh, describe himself as motivated, is anything that so should, should use I am motivator. The next one, no patient and tired. It could be refrained to, I am exhausted and my patience is gone. Uh, five minutes, see you. Could be refreshed to a proper one can be see you in five minutes. Congratulated to this project. It should be refreshing, congratulation to this project. This is my own to record for the, my personal, uh, suggestion to, to, or to the speakers. And the next, I record the doubt, the certain use of their language. Uh, first off, our toastmaster accidentally, success is from your endeavor and effort. You are infused with quality. Real success is a, is about being the best of yourself. You have to keep trying and the success will come to you. From our toastmaster editing, his speech was infused with enthusiasm. From toastmaster waiting, success is not the destination, it is a journey to reach destination. From the toastmaster, M R I, program, tailor, to each student's need. I found the word the tailor is very good in this, in this sentence. Focusing individual potential instead of qualification. From toastmaster Eric. Her resilience and response and resourcefulness. Response is remarkable, dynamic interaction, the room is infused with excitement, engagement, direct learning from. Teacher Eric really a lot of the things to detect. From toastmaster Jacqueline. Sharpen, evaluate skill, dedicated committee members. From toastmaster, Masaji, I said, knowledge and energetic skill. From toastmaster E J, where life comes to doubt. It is beautiful now doubted. As long as we have faith, nothing we cannot conquer. The next from postmaster Chunyi, it makes me see the future. And the next from postmaster Catherine, every person has own strength and weakness. From postmasters. CN one, use the hand gesture effectively. From postmaster B Singo, resonate with my. A student in learning English. Inspire members to embrace the leadership role. And talk and from toastmaster shampoo, increase the variety of topic. And ready, uh, wonderful, excellent use of the, of the words. Alright, today, I, I just jumped in now, the fourth hostmaster had been using today was very infused. Uh, from president Green, once, uh, uh, toastmaster of the evening, Italy ones. For toastmaster M R N E, seven times, for toastmaster Eric, three times. And sorry if I overlook or miss out any, any record for the day, please bear with me. Thank you. I would like to pass my control back to. Uh, our manager, general evaluator. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Grammarian for the detailed analysis. And I shall call for our counter's report. Let's welcome presentation master for Shenghui Ding.
Thank you, G. Let me have my two minutes account to reports. First, Claire, um, zero crutches, Adeline up to now three. Uh, still counting later on. Any, any more chance then? Sue myself, I aware of my R one, so one counting. We Jing twenty-one. Today you have serious ah, 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 like every sentence then you stop with the ah, every sentence stop with the ah, I'm not sure whether you're aware or not. Emma, Emma, very good today, no, no crutches. Eric, today you have six. Jacqueline has two. E J has four, Josie three, Masaji two, Tony have twelve. Tony also are, are so, so this two. Max have five. Catherine has four. Why, why has two? CN one have one, B Singo has one. Uh, which is R. Raymond has three. Okay, okay, so. Chengpo, Chengpo also initially was quite good, but uh, after certain, maybe the second part. Already start with lots of repeated words. Hotel is sixteen. So that's all from me. Thank you. Back to you, generate writer.
Thank you, Madam Akauta for the very detailed and attentive report. And next, I shall call for timers' report on the meeting. Let's welcome timer, Tio Chunni, leadership. They are level one.
Okay, so now I'm sure just one for. Wow, S A, and just now, uh, our, uh, you break, uh. Masaki spoke for two minutes twenty-one second. Uh. Our president spoke for five minutes thirty-second. The D M E introductions, and the entering spoke for nine minutes thirty-second. So our grammarary report, and our next row spoke for. Six minutes thirty-five second. So our, our counter report, I will show, uh, shown, just now spoke for one minute thirty-three second. Back to you, generally, we made that.
Thank you, timer, for the report. And I shall proceed with my. Feedback on the meeting tonight. First of all, when I first joined the meeting, I received a warm welcome. For everyone who is already in the student meeting, especially from the president Claire time. She really welcomed me like, like very, uh, V I P of the meeting today. I really appreciate that. And I noticed that the attendance link is shared a couple of times inside the chat box. And I believe that everyone is reminded to smart out their attendance. So this is very beneficial because sometimes you will forget this and. Yeah, and next, I really like that the background is provided for the meeting today and it fits the theme today. It really shows that someone is putting effort to make the meeting lively and united. Well, and I can see that most members use the background for today's meeting. And this will looks very nice when you have a good photo. Meanwhile, I can notice that the get, the chat box is frequently used to give instant feedback. And this will help to boost the atmosphere of the meetings. And the guests are welcome despite joining later in the chat box as well. So the meeting started off at seven thirty-one M. I think this is quite on time because the meeting is at seven thirty. And especially this time is after all role players are verified inside, inside the meeting room. I can see that S A is following the time very closely to ensure that the meeting starts on time and ends on time. Before the meeting started, actually a few days ago, the S A accepted me to remind me on the date and time on the meeting tonight. I think this is very important because different clubs have different starting time. Because I, my club starts at seven forty-five, so she didn't remind me on that, I'll probably join in at a late, a late. So this is very important. And she started the meeting by introduced herself and introduced the house rule of the meeting. She also asked the guests introduce themselves to make sure that they are welcome. I can see that she's doing a great job on that. And the Zoom master did a great job by sharing slides on the right time and the speakers are spotlighted when they are introduced. Uh, just one suggestion is, uh, to re, can perhaps reclaim the guest and also the new member. Because I am actually, this, I think this is my first or second time joining Sutra Dharma Toastmasters Club. So I'm not familiar with the members here, so it will be very beneficial, very beneficial for me to know that, oh, this is a guest and this is a new member. Because I don't, I don't know, no. Then, and then another suggestion is to share the agenda inside the chat box. I'm not sure if this done yet because after my session, I can, idea, I tried to do it. I think that the agenda is beautifully crafted, all the information are in it. And I think it's a pity that, uh, the agenda is done, wasn't shared inside the meeting. Then we move on to the. President's opening speech. I really like that the president's opening speech where she infused the team. In it, and she asked everyone to comment in the chat box for more interactions between herself and the members. I think this is a very good example because I can see that she and her members are. It means everyone of you has a very strong bond between all of you. And I think that, uh, her efforts of making the club happy is, is really. Much appreciated. And she, for the toastmaster of the evening. Oh, yeah, and then before, before to the, before moving on to the toastmaster evening, she incorporated the introduction to the toastmaster evening. Seamlessly. I know, I just realized, oh, she actually did a great job by sharing the other introductions for all the speakers. I believe that this is a good tradition of the Sutra Dharma Toastmasters Club. Because when the speakers are introduced properly, they feel more connected and more. Yeah, infused in this meeting. I think this is a very good tradition. And I'm sorry for not doing so for the eviator. And next, for the toastmaster evening, she really did a great job by hosting the meeting by introducing the team. And what is toastmasters, especially for this, because we have a few guests today. So if her introducing the toastmasters, the guests can actually understand what is toastmasters better. She introduced all role players and invited them to introduce their role. Actually, I just one suggestion that you can actually mention that I, if I am, I should be, I should. Speak about my role when I'm introduced because I didn't expect that I, I was, I was required to introduce my role. So I think we can highlight that if I was required or not required, because I'm not familiar with the setting here. Then she also reintroduced the speaker properly by informing her, the objecty, the speaker, the erator. And also asking timer to demonstrate the timing sequence and also the speech title. I think that she, I think that she did a great job by. Uh, reducing the timers to measure the sequence because you should save a lot of time. Uh, when the speak, the speaking time is, is the same. And next is our. Because, it's sorry, the, yeah, because, the speaker one is where, he, I can see that he actually wore a marathon shirt. I'm not sure is it confident or is does, he purposely chose that to, to show some connection to his speech. And next, the speaker two has a very good motivating speech and I like that her speech title infused the team today. As for the speaker tree, he shared about his project, uh, of sharing the English without border session. And also his takeaway from the experience. I really think that this is a very beneficial session. And the fourth speaker. I like that she asked if she is audible before she speaks, because often we totally for granted that we are audible when we first admit ourselves. Then, on top of that, I also like that the V P E type in what our, our pit means because. I actually no idea what is RP. I thought it's the car raising, but actually it's the race role players in testing trainings. And next we have our table topic master. So he has picked someone out of the new members without roles to do the first table topic. I think this is a very good move. Because when members have no roles, they had actually used the, take this opportunity to do more speaking. Uh, in the toastmasters. And also, he, I like that he prepared slides for a topic. So that the speakers inform verbally and also visually. And also his topic are short and. Easy to remember, especially for giving a short term memory because when table topping master give me very lengthy questions, I will tend to forget them. I think this is a very good move. And also. I like that he puts the president as the last, because actually I was thinking why he didn't ask president first. Because I noticed that president had no role and she wasn't called up, but actually the best is for the last. So, and then on top of that, he also managed to fit seven speakers, which is a good amount of table topic response for a meeting. And as for the timer, he quit a great job of taking note of time. I particularly like that he shared everyone's timing, allowing their eligibility to be watered inside his Excel cloud. This is very, uh, very benef- beneficial for, for me especially. To know that, okay, this member is qualified, this member is not qualified. Then, as for our eviators. A big round of applause to them. They listen attentively and they give the suitable evaluation for each of the speakers. Overall, everyone participated enthusiastically. And the atmosphere is lively and harmonious. I can feel that the Sutra Utama Toastmasters Club is a very united club. And the spirit can move heaven and earth. I believe that the guests will be moved as well and they will move on to join the club. So that's all for my. So that's all for my sharing tonight, I'm sorry that I didn't prepare slides for this, so. Back to you for the, this concludes the general invasion segment and I shall pass the control meeting to the toastmaster of the evening, Adeline Chin.
Thank you, thank you, please give our general editor a round of applause. Wow, such a wonderful and and powerful evaluation for our G, thank you, Sunting. And right now, continuous is our award presentation. Is it drum master, can get ready our award presentation right now? Alright, so who is the winner of the tuning tonight? The best speaker is our, the the, who is that? Oh my god, Eric Ro, please. Eric, congratulations to you. Drum master, are you ready? Or S A must take the photo, right?
Yeah, 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 I'm I'm trying to add the spotlight.
How about our president?
Oh, president, okay, so my, maybe, so wait ah. Okay, one, two, three, smile, everyone, wait ah, one, two, three, smile. Eric. I I will take another one, another one, one, two, three, yes. Three, another one, one, two, three, okay, great.
Alright, thank you, S A, congratulations again, our speaker Eric. So how about the best table topic session, who is the winner today, the the, who is that? Come on, please, our wow, that's law, our senior member. Best law, best temper topic speaker, oh, wow.
Okay, okay, one, two, three, smile. Okay, I will take another one, one, two, three, smile, okay, great, then.
Alright, thanks a lot, S A, so last is our best inventor, who is that? Wow, so many inventor, inventor today, we got four inventor today, who is this? Oh, my god, our founder, president, Reverend Chi, congratulations. Wow.
Okay, someone.
Don't be curious, it's you. Alright, S A, ready?
One, two, three, done, another one, one, two, three. Great, I take another one. One, two, three, okay, done.
Alright, thank you, S A, so now. So now is our announcement and activity. Session, so how about I shall invite our first. Hmm, first activity and announcement, I shall invite. Jacqueline to announce our outfit even event today coming soon. Jacqueline, are you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Well, uh, our pitch actually, our pitch by zero is supposed to be hot next week, next Wednesday. But due to uh one of our trainers who is suffering from. An acute illness, uh we have to postpone this uh activity to a further date. So, um. First I say, uh actually I really hope that this event will be uh carried on in the near future, I wish. But not, okay, uh a speedy recovery. So um for me, I would think that this procedure is meaningful because evaluation skills like driving skills. Require you technical learning, you can't drive without guidance from an instructor. Just as you can't evaluate effectively without training, regardless of your backgrounds. Even if you can speak English very friendly, it doesn't mean that you can evaluate. Trust me, alright, so uh it is. Our workshop actually is going to be infused with great trainers mentors and a hands-on learning center approach to training. It is definitely worth joining, so next time if the time is fixed, time and dates are fixed. I hope that all of you can join, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Jacqueline, so coming soon, uh sorry. For the news, I will invite our second speaker to announce our activity, Shengpu. Over to you. Hmm, how about this one, Simbuko, slide right? No. Alright, never mind, I just uh.
Oh, oh, you mean the one are the, that, we are going to have the. Uh speaker turn on. Yeah, let me check, twenty twenty third, I think, twenty third of, twenty third of November. On, it's on Saturday, uh yeah, the age I think though, November, on Saturday, if you want.
Uh sorry to, sorry to interrupt you, Shengpu, uh your announcement is the next one. This club bowling is actually, this one actually belongs to Josie, uh she has left the meeting. So I just make a quick announcement on the club bowling, there's a club bowling uh event that held by our club. At Diamond Bowl on the ninth of November, ten thirty A M, so if you have the time on that. Morning, please, please come and join the the bowling event, alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, uh our V P E, so the next our regular meeting is held on. Uh twenty November, so is our one hundred and eleven regular meeting. So it's a celebrate the power race session, so please welcome our member. Continue is, next slide please, continue is our humor and. Humorous and table topic division content is held on twenty three November on Saturday. So also welcome our member to have a look to this contents. Because this one is a division content, so it's something, alright, so continue is our speaker turn over to you. Simple, please announce again, sorry, this.
Okay, sorry, okay, we are going to have a speaker turn, uh. Which is a marathon for speech, uh in, sorry, on twenty third November this month, which is on Saturday. The time is from nine thirty until uh twelve P M, so if you are interested to join us, please. Please register in our group chat, yeah, that's all, back to you, Adri, uh Adri.
Thank you, Simpul, so next slide please. Alright, so next activity is our E W B special. And the day we have a special speaker is our Yasuta Senior Dishing Grace Toastmaster. And help on to our Sutra office and help on also to twenty seven November, when I say. And it start, we will, we will start at to nine thirty. And right now. I think we still on time, right, I shall invite our president Kratan to have a crossing address, over to you, president.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, our T M E today, thank you so much. Good evening, fellow toastmasters and distinguished guests. First of all, I would like to thanks our G E Toastmasters, Suting, for providing us. With a, with a such one valuable feedbacks. And your insights and observations will help us to continue to grow and improve as a club. We will also love and in to invite you comes again always to join us the meeting in the future. And next, I will be thanks for all of us, all of you to joining us this evening. Sutra Utama Toastmasters Club, tonight, we explore the journey to success. A team that remind us that success is more than just a destination. It is an experience, the lessons and the growth we gather along the way. Before we off officially ending the meeting, I would like to invite our guests. Jama, are you there to share your thoughts on tonight meetings? How do you feel about our clubs and the sessions tonight? Where are you, Jama, are you there, hello, Jama? Can you give us some some feedbacks? Jama, are you there? Alright, Jama.
Can you hear my voice?
Yeah, finally.
So, actually, uh thank you very much for inviting me to join these sessions. So actually, I think after joining these uh sessions, I found that it's. It's uh this uh sessions is very useful for me in order to improve my uh confidence level. And then I think um these sessions also good uh to share our talk and our. Our, our talk and also we have learned a lot of, we we also learned a a fuse uh. Uh words, for example, infused, so, so I hope that. If I join uh this uh Toastmasters Club, uh sorry, Toastmasters. Toastmasters Club, so I hope that everyone can help me to improve my confidence levels. And also my public speaking, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Jama, definitely we will help each other. Next, next meeting, twentieth of November, this comes enjoy as soon as possible. Thank you, and then next, I would like to invite a Kalai Wani, are you there, are you able to talk? Hi, Kalai Wani, are you there? I think she's inside the car, inside the bus. Alright, so I will ask Josie to ask any other feedbacks from you. Okay, next, I would like to ask our new members, Jessica, how do you feel tonight, Jessica? Jessica, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. So our new members, a very new member, everyone, all the members, she is Jessica. And then anything you want to share with us?
So, uh the reason I come to the Toastmaster because my English is very bad. So I hope that um. Uh with the environment that on the Toastmaster member and the president is created, I can improve my English better and better. Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, Jessica, thank you so much, thank you once again, everyone. And thank you all the role players today for being part of our journey tonight. And we, we will look forward to seeing you all at our next meetings. And we will continue to taking steps towards grow and success together. Have a wonderful evening, now I should urgent the meeting, thank you everyone, see you guys again. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Good night, bye bye, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, good night, bye bye.
Great meeting, bye bye.
Bye, thank you, thank you, Suting, thank you, Jessica, thank you, Eric, thank you, Catherine. Bye bye, everyone. Thank you, Jama and Kalai, Wani, bye bye, Jama, bye.